Okay, we have approval of the minutes. I didn't read them, so I'd like to make the approval of the nice three meeting minutes tomorrow night. Right, Bill? JP, you okay with that?
Yep.
Mayor, anything other than what's on the agenda?
Yeah.
Public speak. By the way, if you could, do you need to send around a letter of things so you know who's here?
No, maybe not.
Print your name so that Bill can put it in the minutes. So we'll go to the first topic, which is the 269,000 for the fire department, mostly for overtime. Chief, explain why this unusual overtime is required.
Sure. So the 5130 line fire overtime pay, the request for that is 157, 946 and 56 cents. That is, January 1st, I had two members, two firefighters who were members of the National Guard, get activated and deployed for eight months. That was unanticipated. Fortunately, I was able to notify people before January 1st when contractually shift change assignments had to be made. They were on the same shifts, so I moved them to separate shifts as a cost-saving measure. That was not anticipated, losing two people for eight months, or six months out of fiscal year. I had a captain who was scheduled to retire in November of this year, decided he was going to retire this fiscal year. So that was unanticipated overtime while he opted to use his vacation style at the time instead of being paid out for it. So the two of them, two of those combined was just a hundred thousand dollars in unanticipated overtime. The original funded amount for this year was 150,000 dollars in fire overtime. And just to give you some historical numbers, on actual spend, FY15 was about 303,000, FY16 was 293,000, '17 was 211,000, last year was 240,000. This year with this, probably on track for about 243, 244.
With this add?
Well, that's my projected spending with the captains' overtime in East Tampa.
Okay.
So this appropriation will...
So what you're saying is, if I hear it right, I don't have the numbers that you just spoke of, it's fairly close to what you've been spending the last few years on overtime.
Correct.
And for Councilor Lynch's benefit, we have a minimum manning contract with the union, which means you have to fill shifts with so many people. And therefore, if you have no firefighters on that shift, there's a five or something like that?
Five is the contractual.
You have to add someone on overtime. And it's time and a half?
Yes.
We don't, I forget, do we have specials or part-timers or is that...
We have one part-time firefighter who recently decided he did not want to become full-time. So the civil service list that just came out, I've had conversation with the mayor, is there's numbers there. I can't say that there's no quality candidates there, but there's not candidates that I think would relocate these candidates for part-time employment. So I think it's gonna take probably three or four months for you to fill those four part-time firefighter positions. And just so you know, Councilor, our call force, they are civil service. So we go to hire full-time, it's just paperwork change with civil service. We don't have to re-interview, they don't have to do a pre-employed physical, a physical agility test because they're already in civil service. So for career firefighters, it cuts our hiring time down by about two months.
And you build a rapport with them.
We know what we're getting and we hire them full-time.
Okay.
So the overtime was the big one. The next one, 5111, this is in 2200 as well, that is 31,202 dollars, and that's to hire the one military substitute firefighter. He was a member of the call force. He was hired as a military substitute, which civil service allows us to do. So if those firefighters came back early for some reason, we could release this person from full-time employment. We don't have to pay him unemployment benefits because he's a substitute, not a full-time employee.
Okay.
Knowing we had a retirement, his status changed last week to full-time because he is now filling a vacancy created by the captain who's officially retired, not the books.
Do you have your National Guard guys back yet?
No, they won't be back till August.
Oh, Jesus, okay.
So I'm gonna have two months' worth of taking a meeting to start to move this away. But this saved, my guess is it probably saved 31,000 in salary, probably saved about 42, 43,000 in overtime.
Okay.
Otherwise, the overtime request would have been all over 200,000.
All right, so let's go to the committee. Chief, I was wondering if you could give us, what are really your options when you're faced with the situation you're facing? What are the, what can you do? What's the best choice and the other choices?
Well, there's plenty of choices. The best choice, I think, is doing what we're doing. I'm sure everybody's seen, working with the mayor's office, I put in for a federal staffing grant that would pay for four firefighters over three years. The percentages change. That will, I would say, drop our overtime to about 100,000 dollars a year.
But it's paid by federal grant?
It does a matching, but the first two years, our savings in overtime will cover the city's match. So the third year, we own more of the salary, so it'll be close to the overtime savings. The cumulative overtime savings over three years will pay for the city's match over three years.
What are our chances of getting this grant?
With the federal government, Councilor, it's a roll of the dice. We have some, thanks to the mayor, we have some great support from our federal...
Some guy who's on Ways and Means at the House.
And our senators as well, so hopefully we have a pretty solid case. So that's one way to locate it.
But of course, after three years, we either eat the whole salary or they go away.
Yeah, we eat salary or...
Is that allowed by civil service?
It's just one of those, it's...
If we lay off somebody, that's a...
You get laid off. So we either, if we have retirements over that three years, we can fill, or at the end of four, three years, if the city can afford it, then the four firefighters hired, we can lay off.
Okay.
The other option, the least palatable to me, and I'm sure the mayor, is that we ignore the collective bargaining agreement and don't fill two firefighters.
You can't do that.
Well, you can, but it would cost the city a lot of money to win.
Go to court, you know that.
Not a root, I think the five minimum is fair, considering that was established...
It's also safer.
That started in 1994, and our current staffing model has been in place since 1973. So I think the five minimum is a, that's dangerous for us.
It's low anyway, because if you send two ambulances out in one, in an hour, you only have one guy left.
And then we're calling back one person for overtime, which was another cost measure. We used to backfill to three for probably the last six years. We've only been backfilling to two.
Is that also on the...
Could you explain that so that everyone watching can understand that?
If there's, perfect world, there's firefighters on duty. Two ambulances go out, it leaves one firefighter in the station. We call back one firefighter off duty on overtime to maintain two in the station all the time. We used to maintain three, but with our call volume, it became cost prohibitive. It was probably, I would say, about a 15,000 to 20,000 dollar a year cost maintaining three as compared to maintaining two.
If I remember the old statistics, it was like 50 times a year approximately, and this may be four or five years ago, with that, all three ambulances were out.
So I just did the numbers for the grant. In calendar year 2018, all three ambulances were out of the station 78 times, leaving the station empty. The average time the station was empty was 15 minutes, which meant for 15 minutes, there was nobody in East Hampton able to respond. And the example I use is when Mean sent a fire upstairs. I was the only firefighter to respond. It was myself and three police officers who got there, and the engine was leaving a false alarm at center button. So we're rolling the dice. It's risk management at its most riskiest form, but...
Back to the original question, which was the options that we have, the last thing you said was we would not honor the contract. That doesn't seem palatable to me.
No.
Anything else? We had on-call firefighters, that you said there was only one shift?
There's one. We're looking, they're not assigned to a shift. They are used per the collective bargaining agreement. If a firefighter takes a personal tour that causes overtime, it's offered to a call firefighter first.
Personal tour?
They get personal days, vacation days, sick days. So if they take a personal day...
Yeah.
And it causes overtime, it's offered to a call firefighter first. And if they can't fill an overtime shift, then before somebody gets mandatory held, call firefighter comes in, they don't get paid time and a half, they get paid their rate, which I think is 13 dollars an hour for a paramedic.
Are you kidding? That's right, I remember it. The same conversation last time.
If I remember right, in last, and we're working on changing that. The crossing guards get more than my call paramedic firefighters.
Okay.
They should at least be getting something more than that, and we should make every effort to...
They're certified paramedics.
Every effort to get as many of them as possible.
We try to maintain four to five because it's, if they don't work once a month, they lose their skills. We're fortunate, the one we have left works somewhere else, but if they're not working in our system, they get rusty. So we try to have them work at least once a month and make it worthwhile, and with more than four, it's tough to have them work more than once a month.
Because the only times they really fill in are for the personal tours?
Personal, or somebody's gone to the academy, they'll fill in shifts for somebody who's at the academy for eight weeks. Somebody's out on extended injury or illness, which hasn't happened in a while.
Double, double that. You're only allowed to call them in, therefore, on those occasions. You can't call them in because two ambulances just went out. If there's another firefighter available.
If we're filling the station, they send out the first phone. If nobody responds, none of the career firefighters respond saying they're coming in in three minutes, it goes on a second time, then anybody.
Or non-call.
Yeah.
How many do we have? Do we have one?
We have one currently. After July, because of the cost of a pre-employed physical uniforms, I gotta wait till after July before I can hire, start the hiring process for them.
Is there anything more immediate we can do to help? 13 dollars seems appalling for that kind of...
Who's setting that rate up?
Who's setting that rate, and we locked into it?
No, there's nothing, there's no position description in the city for them, no salary. We're working on that. I can tell you that as recent as 10 years ago, it was 750 an hour.
Oh, God.
And in the 90s, it would've been 5 dollars an hour. So it's always been low, but the people that take it aren't taking it for the money, they're taking it because they want full-time employment.
They get experience.
They wanna get, get seen, they wanna interact, and we wanna see them.
And basically, you're getting your foot in the door.
Right.
And this is common with all fire departments, right?
No, we're one of the few that have civil service call firefighters.
Oh, really?
We are, in the state, we're an anomaly.
Why is that?
A lot of the departments that are civil service have done away with call fire departments, or they have them, and they don't explore it. There's a lot of departments in the last three years that have asked me about it. For the candidate, the good thing is, right now, the civil service entrance exam is 250 dollars. And then 150 dollars to take the physical agility test. Before you're even guaranteed a job offer, you've laid out that much money. Once we hire a call firefighter, they never have to take that test again, as long as they wanna work in these things. So that every two-year cycle that goes by, they're saving that money. So it's, the draw is there, but...
Anything else?
Not on, not on overtime, please.
Phil?
On the overtime pay, when did he retire? Like, so that was scheduled for next year, and they retired this year?
Yeah, his last day of actually being in the station was in February, and his official retirement date was last Friday.
Yeah.
It was the 4th, May 4th.
And that's the sick leave buyback as well?
Yes.
Right, which I understand now. On the full-time regular, the one military substitute fighter, the top one, the 31,000, is that his annual salary that he would be getting?
Salary, that covers the salary and his incentives that he gets.
Okay, is that the July 1st salary? So are we just paying from...
No, that's from January 1st to June 30th.
That's half his, half of regular.
Half his set position, so that's only the rest of the...
Yeah, the rest, so now he's dropping into one of the already funded positions.
Yeah.
This is covering the last six months where he's worked.
I got you.
Save overtime, we hire.
So then the new budget will starting already...
He'll be in there, it's already in there.
So, okay. That's good.
Peg, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Anything from the mayor, the finance director on this? Okay, it's obviously necessary. You have anything else, JP? Is that something? The rest of these items are typical end-of-year kind of things that we've gotten from a lot of departments. Okay.
Although I did have...
Oh, I got more questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Other items.
Other items, yes, okay. About overtime, no, and sick leave buyback, no. Go ahead, let me grab the next one.
So the vehicle repairs, equipment, 13,000 dollars for the new tires. The fire truck was from 2008, the last 10 years, we have to do it. I'm trying to look and see where we budgeted, only, I think it was 8,000 dollars? Right? Well, you requested 10,000. The budget was cut to 8,000. I guess, I wasn't a part of the budgeting process last year. Was that asked for, we only asked for 10,000, if we had 13,000 at the age, that's over 20,000. You know, we're kinda shortchanging it with the 10,000. Is there a reason? What was the thought process? Because now we're...
The amount funded was to balance the budget.
Okay.
And I hoped to make it through July 1st. And the tires still have wearable tread, but because of the size of the vehicle, it falls on the pedal of DOT.
Sure.
And those tires have a 10-year life, we're on borrowed time.
Yeah.
The inspector said, "Don't come back for me next year to get a vehicle."
Which is completely understandable, you know, and I think that, you know, we need to try to make notes of that. I personally, in reviewing these budgets, wanna make notes of that. If there's a shortfall and there's something that needs to come up, that we're gonna be doing an appropriation for later, I personally think that that information should be, you know, set, you know, I think, in reviewing the budget, maybe as we go through tomorrow, if there's anything that's pending that we're gonna need to repair, that we're gonna need to appropriate money for. I would like to know on that. I just think that that's good, you know, that we should be aware of it.
Hopefully, I've got no, no big-ticket items.
Yeah.
Projected repairs.
And we could talk about that when you, when you come in, right? I would like to know those also, if there are things that you didn't get in your budget. So that, when you come back, if that's for next time.
I have an answer to this, though. It has been the practice of the last mayor and this mayor to put, instead of funding anticipated maintenance, it has to be really knowledgeable, putting that money in reserve, and then allowing the departments to come for those maintenance items. To me, that's more efficient because you may have known about the tires, but there's a lot of maintenance we don't know about, so the money in reserve allows it to go to what department is needed. And that's the practice, I believe, that we've had... Mayor, correct, that's your practice too?
Okay. And in fairness to Melissa, if I put in...
I'm not asking for everything.
She would probably strangle me if I gave her the numbers of what I wanted.
Right. And I know the library does that and everything, you know, and I completely understand and I get it. I'm just, you know, big-ticket items, and we're gonna come back and ask for 13,000 dollars for something that has a life expectancy of 10 years. We know it's coming up this year, it's not in the budget, FYI, this is probably gonna be coming if we can spread it out another year, I think it'd be good, but just food for thought for my brain.
Anything else?
On maintenance service agreements, we have the 3,000 dollars for the three stretchers and related equipment there. And then two lines down miscellaneous tech services, there's 4,000 dollars. It also says contract for stretchers, related equipment.
Yeah, I was supposed to be, I meant to delete that, I put in a long item, so that, the 2310, 5319 is 4,000 dollars, and that's to cover the ambulance billing company.
Okay.
That's an anticipated shortfall because ambulance receipts are higher. The last two years, that fund, Melissa found money in the budget to pay the deficit out of that. This year, ambulance receipts every month have been higher, so this is anticipating we're gonna be, I'm gonna be 4,000 dollars short.
Okay. So then the stretcher thing's not relevant to that line?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm confused. Maybe it's just me, but if your receipts are higher and the costs are more, is it because we're paying a percentage?
Yes, we pay a percentage to the billing company.
Got it. They get a percentage, so they're getting more for giving us more.
As Mayor Tausig used to say, this is the only line item that ever wanted me to come back and ask for more money.
This is a good thing.
Because we're getting more receipts, that's the reason.
Right.
It's good.
And they get a percentage, straight.
I don't know if it's good that we have a lot more ambulance calls though.
It's gonna rate more revenue though.
Sounds like an insurance company.
I have a question about the 1370, repairs to vehicles and equipment, that was unanticipated, a new fuel tank?
So our 2014 ambulance, in for routine maintenance, automotive repair, you noticed some scaling on the fuel tank. Luckily, he didn't poke it, he touched it and felt it give, so that was immediate, had to repair that immediately.
Holy cow.
And he noticed the transmission lines were starting to rot, and tires were questionable. So we replaced the rears to get through the winter. It's gonna need fronts.
Is the 14 up for replacement?
There's actually another ambulance in front of that.
Really?
For replacement, yes.
Okay.
So 14 is only like a five-year-old ambulance, and on most vehicles, the fuel tank doesn't fall apart like that. Can you explain what happened?
No idea. Lousy materials, lousy workmanship.
Lot of warranty.
Lot of warranty.
But we can notify the manufacturer anyway.
Yeah, because we had to buy the tank from them, but they don't care.
You have something else?
Yeah, we've had to replace the tanks on our trucks that are five-year-old.
Same manufacturer?
So we might not... Okay.
Who's the manufacturer?
International.
We've switched manufacturers.
And so have I.
That's interesting, good, good to know. Fuel tanks are important. Anything else, gentlemen? You have a lot to do tonight. No, you're good. Anybody on this? Tommy just came, we're dealing with the 16,000 fire department. I'll take a motion, gentlemen.
I will.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is up for public hearing. Dave, I'd like you to be here Wednesday.
Is that scheduled for next week, Councilor?
Wednesday, the 15th. All right, budget. So I wanna thank the mayor for accommodating my schedule. We normally start with general government, that moves to the end, but I don't think that'll hurt anything. What I typically do...
Thank you.
You're welcome, Joe. Is personally look at where the numbers change from year to year, and ask the department heads to tell me what their wish list was, and the mayor will say, "Well, yeah, but we couldn't afford that." But that's my way of doing it. So we'll start with Public Works. That's right, I don't know his name. And I, I wanna go right to the numbers, but Joe or councilors, do you wanna ask any questions about the narratives, which are fairly much the same as last year? We did increase the engineering area by one person this year, right? And has that proved valuable?
No. We wouldn't be doing the things that we're doing now. We have several grants going, several projects going. I don't know how we would do it if we were to have the way we did.
Okay, and he's full-time, right?
She's full-time.
She? I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Anything else on the narrative from anybody? Councilors, anybody? Okay. Joe, do you wanna make any comments that are in the narrative that you wanna highlight?
I do not. Other than the fact that we are, like I started to mention, we have several projects going, big projects, whether it's Berry Street, or whether it's the two roundabouts, or whether it's Complete Street, or St. Paul's Chapter 90. We've got a lot of things going.
Okay. Mayor, any comment, general comment, before we get into the numbers?
I know, just that, you know, the Department of Public Works is stretched thin, not just by straight companies, but just very technical projects that are all coming online at the same time. And we're working with not only the Free Good, they have the several different consultants and engineering firms that have different needs, and from things small, like four or five bike pads, to Berry Street, and moving poles and whatnot.
Okay, so, just a quick question on the narrative. Integrated Water Resource Management Plan, if you could just refresh our memories with regard to the bottom line that that plan is suggesting that we have to come up with as a community?
The bottom line is, I believe, we're looking at something like 20 million dollars over the next five years for improvements to the water system, the sewer collection system, the wastewater treatment plant, and also stormwater requirement.
Thank you. 4010, Public Works Administration. There was a change, I guess it was last year, we dropped one FTE, we moved a person, I think, Melissa, am I right? The collection of water bills was moved to your office, am I correct there?
The collection of water bills is signed by Lori, and she moved from the DPW office to the, you know, worker's office, and they named many of the same persons she had in the DPW, as well as the systems with the collection.
Okay, that explains the FTE. Salaries, so the salary drop from 2018 to 168 now is because of that change?
I doubt very much that it dropped at all, it just moved to another department.
It moved to another department, I meant that, that this department's dropped here. Okay. All right, I don't have anything else on this page, gentlemen?
Question about the bookkeeper? That was added, that wasn't here.
That's correct.
The office manager was eliminated, the bookkeeper came in.
The bookkeeper came in, office manager went in. Presume the office manager was at a higher salary than the bookkeeper. How much was the office manager's salary? Does anyone remember? Melissa?
No, I'm honestly sure, but it would've been in last year's.
That was, that was, that was a grade eight, the bookkeeper is a grade seven.
Seven. Probably close to 40.
Close to 40, okay, so not...
Maybe a little longer.
Not all that different, but the bookkeeper's now at 43 almost. Why did we have on the budget, an align item for the clerk that lists 83, 450?
There were two of them, one of them moved into the...
That was the budget, and that was the requested amount for this year. Was 82, one?
So when they proposed their budgets, they did a five align item, and then we, this year, broke out, even those are hitting the same line, that there's two more people that need to be...
These two add up to that. Add up to this.
Add up to the 82.
These two add up to...
Our budget does not differentiate by job title, so I have, let's say, for my office, that I know better than Joe, I have six people that we pay out of my office, and we use three line items. So the requests, or what happened last year, is based on, well, there's two people in this line, and three people in this line, and one person over here. This year, we put every single title with a matching salary in consideration.
Thank you.
Last year's salary was 38, 224.
Okay. Anything else on this? This is this Public Works Administration.
The institute's travel went up, was a request. Small amount.
Thank you. It's just cold.
25 dollars, on one hundredth of a percentage of the budget. So Peg and Tom, anything before I move on?
You guys don't get office supplies this year?
That's our general...
Honestly, no, I'd like to talk about that.
Oh, yeah.
Because in general government, which we passed over this year, we have changed the way that we are gonna do general office supplies, as well as the way that we're gonna do training for most of our...
So it all falls in that budget?
Right, so there's gonna be an operating budget, it's not a, you know, there's no people in it, it's just that all, all file folders will be ordered through the file folder department and they, and they do not like piece them all over this thing.
Yep, that makes sense.
And, and education the same way, Jane was in charge of approving every single person's, like, training and education and see if she can use that money, you know, to coordinate maybe a training to come here versus sending everyone out or something like that.
That's good.
That sounds much more efficient.
Streamlines.
Okay. All right, now I'm moving on to engineering. Why does it say one point seven? Is that because some of the engineering budget is in enterprise? FTE-wise? I thought they were both full-time.
They are both.
So all of the FTEs reflect a portion of forty hours a week. Most of the city hall employees are not forty hours a week, so they're like twenty-eight, five.
I got it, thank you, all right.
So it's all based on a forty-hour week? Okay, gotcha.
So my only other question.
I just want to normalize it, you know, that one looks like.
You like normal.
Do we have anybody who's working forty-hour weeks?
Yes, yes, several.
Several, but not, the majority are working thirty-five hour weeks?
So there's some thirty-fives, some thirty fours in this building, some twentyeights, some nineteen's, and then there are, you know, all of, all of the public work employees that work in the divisions of public work, they're all forty hours a week.
Okay, I just.
And that, my only other question was education and training, there was a request, but as you just said, it moved to personnel, it sounds like.
Well, it is its own cost center?
Mm-hmm.
And, and that cost center is, you know, just like legal isn't just a cost center, there's no people in it, it just gets down to the legal bill to go, and that, so that that cost center is managed by the mayor's office, in this case, training will be managed by the personnel office.
So if, if the engineering department needed to get some education or training, they would go to personnel, ask Jane if it was okay and fund it through Jane's office? Okay, good.
And all of the requests were, were itemized and funded, that's not true, like, when we, when we got down to the, to the, to like, this is, you know, this keeps us within our budget parameters and this is how much, you know, there's, let's say, six, six hundred dollars for education in the administrative office for DPW, that six hundred dollars was moved and then, so it should add up to the same amount that would have been funded in the budget anyway.
Okay.
To be neutral. But then, if something should happen and Joe doesn't go to a seminar, like, he really would like the highway supervisors go to a seminar, it's all in that one place and it can be approved by, without moving it between departments.
Very efficient. Yes, Tom?
On the fuel section.
In this area?
Four one, you have a pitch.
Oh, we skipped fuel, my apologies.
I just noticed that the, the cost is rising and I was wondering if that's because of changes in the cost of fuel or whether our vehicles are consuming more fuel or whatever.
I don't see us consuming more fuel because of getting older, that's just the cost of fuel.
So it's just that the cost is what I'm saying?
Yeah, it has gone up quite a bit since last year.
Yeah, it was cheap last year. Okay, thanks.
I apologize to my colleagues for jumping over fuel. You guys have any questions on fuel? Thank you, Tom, for bringing it up. No?
I don't have a fuel question.
You have any more on engineering?
Cell phone questions.
Engineering?
Within the engineering. We have a policy, how many people in the whole city have cell phones? That are municipal cell phones? Because it seems like everybody pretty much has their own cellphone. I just wonder how many we have and whether we should be eliminating that expense if everybody pretty much is carrying their own.
Well, I think that the cellphone allowance is something that they could, you know, need to wrap this in.
Are they providing phones or are they just reimbursing the people's bills?
Reimbursing people for.
Right, this happens a lot in corporate world, if you're racking up a ton of minutes on your phone, you'll, you can submit receipts saying that these were all calls.
Not, not everybody has unlimited minutes on their.
But this is not a reimbursement, this is, I think it's straight thirty dollars a month for the.
Yes, it's allowance, yeah.
This is an allowance.
But do they have, like, I always, when I had that, I had to submit proof that I actually was paying a book. It was three hundred dollars, but I, you know, like, and, and, and contractually, I believe that the, the DPW divisions in the field have an allowance as part of their contract.
And it is probably cheaper than providing them with cell phones and plans, but it also is necessary because you need to communicate.
They, they use it all day, they use them all day long for communicating with each other. Sometimes the radio is spotty, the two-way radio.
They used to have, before cell phones, not too long ago, I like.
Is it thirty dollars a year?
It's thirty dollars.
Per person, three hundred and sixty dollars a year, and again, mayor, how many in the city, approximately?
Do you have cell phones?
We have, who get this reimbursed, or Melissa?
Oh, I'm not sure how many that there is. I don't know.
Yeah, I couldn't say that, I know, I mean, how many guys do you have in, in your group?
Well, there's the, there's the three supervisors.
And the foreman, too, right.
The two engineers and the foreman, so you're probably talking about seven or eight.
Seven or eight that get the thirty dollars.
Two people.
Thirty dollars a month. Twelve months, it's three sixty.
Okay, can we move on?
Yep.
Highway, no, I'm sorry, you got everything?
Computer services, what, that's seventy-five hundred last year, seventy-five hundred this year, and sixteen and seventeen was only five hundred dollars, so I'm wondering what inflated that number, seven grand last year? Uh, well, computer services.
Something in an old budget.
I have the old budget and the new budget because there's no comparisons in years past.
The new engineer.
But I thought that was just a one-time purchase last year to give him new equipment and stuff like that and a laptop and everything, right? Wasn't that what that was last year?
That was to get the goal, get the new engineer going.
Right.
We're still, we're still looking for additional equipment for engineers.
What specifically is he need?
Programs, AutoCAD programs, software.
They have to get special licenses too for some of the programs that you use.
Right, but that, that should be a predicted expense, that's either an annual or multi-year contract.
Well, if, if they're looking for additional programs that they don't have now, that they're, that they're going to get or they want to get.
Could you get us some more information on that, on what he's looking for?
Yeah, because didn't, I thought, last year that went up to seventy-five hundred just so that they could start up, which we understood, and it's maintaining again this year, so does he, does he, does he need everything brand new again? Was that seventy-five hundred spent for all that already this year?
I'm not sure.
Okay, so, you know, if we didn't spend the seventy-five hundred for all the startup equipment, this should be your remaining money that we can look at.
We can look at that, but if you provide us with what he's looking for for this coming year, that would be.
We answered the office supplies, tools and supplies, in sixteen was twenty-one dollars, there was nothing spent actual, and seventeen, two hundred dollars budgeted in two thousand eighteen, and then nineteen, and now twelve, we're looking for twelve hundred dollars. So I'm just wondering why it goes from twenty-one to zero to twelve hundred.
He was looking for, one of the things he was looking for was that it was on transit level.
Okay. Those are twelve hundred dollars. And then, no, they're two hundred dollars or whatever, so a thousand bucks.
I'm not sure the cost of that.
They're not cheap, my father was a surveyor. The twelve hundred is cheap.
Well, I'm just saying, twelve hundred, it went up last year and it sustained that increase this year.
I'm just responding to what a cost if he needs a new level. And.
I don't know, I just had a question on that one. And dues and memberships is going to education, is that, as well? Okay.
Any comments? Moving on to highway budget. We have eight total FTEs, there's no change from previous years.
Correct.
We're probably gonna answer no, but is that a full complement of what has been in the highway department or?
No, yes, it is.
It is, oh, since, from way back, I mean?
Oh, not from way back, it's, it's.
It's been this way for a few years.
For a few years.
Okay. So the salary change?
Contractual.
Contractual, this is collective bargaining, went up from three sixty-seven, I mean, to four oh one, to four sixteen, I mean, so fifteen thousand or so, give or take, that's collective bargaining.
Collective bargaining, some, some of the newer employees may be going up a step.
Did we add step increases to this budget?
Yeah.
I thought we weren't gonna do that because we have a whole new pay plan.
They're collective bargaining.
Oh, collective bargaining step increases, my.
Yeah, right.
Daniel made stupid comments. Peg, you're not the only one.
Sweet.
All right. Uh, okay, I understand how the budget's broken out. We add up everybody. The only other one was, Joe, it seems as though you asked for under rentals, twenty thousand, you were given flat line to ten, what did you anticipate needing to rent? Then the mayor said, well, I can't afford it.
Well, sometimes we would need to rent a skid steer with a brush attached to the front to clear railways or, at the present time, our sweeper is on its last leg, we might, we might need to rent the sweeper.
And you're, okay.
When was the last time you bought a sweeper?
I think, I believe our sweeper's close to twenty years old.
Probably something we ought to look at buying instead of renting.
It's off, it's off capital.
Yep, okay. I don't have anything else on this page that's out. Bill, you're first.
Tires, tubes and chains.
Sounds like a name of a song.
Tom probably sings that song. Four thousand dollars, then we went up in seventeen to twelve thousand dollars, and then the budget went down to seventy-five hundred. What, what drives that line? What, what, what made it go up to?
If you're buying tires for a strut, it's so much, if you're buying tires for a loader, it's so much more.
Okay, so that's what drove it in seventeen and you're just maintaining the, the normal balance, okay. And then I had the same rental question. Got it? Dues and memberships, I'm good.
JP? Uh, the professional services, with thirty thousand dollars, you asked for thirty-five, cut back to thirty, would you explain that?
What it, what's it at, police protection when we're working the road, police details.
Right.
I remember that.
Police details.
And you'll see that in every, every budget, highway, water, sewer.
Right.
And that's required, right? We can't have flagmen in Massachusetts.
We can have a flagman, but I don't want.
Only certain circumstances.
I'm glad he's here. But, but, but flagmen are not a lot cheaper than.
And policemen are a lot better, safer.
What's the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen actuels on that line item?
Professional services.
What we've spent so far?
So sixteen was thirty-one thousand, seventeen was only fourteen thousand, the budget was thirty thousand in eighteen and nineteen.
But that fourteen thousand, could it supplement it?
Could.
Couldn't it have, I mean, so.
So thirty thousand seems ballpark.
Just as, just as a matter of, Melissa, bookkeeping, if we have a supplemental appropriation in a fiscal year, say, professional services, would it appear in the?
Actuals is actuels.
It would be including the supplemental.
Eighteen would.
Would actual spending include supplemental?
It says it happens in actuels.
Actual for sixteen, seventeen, eighteen was the budget, nineteen budget.
Okay.
We're taking out the national.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Anything else, gentlemen?
Fourteen wasn't. Yes.
Right, so the only one you would have actuels on is this year, and I did, I believe in the total graph line, the, I'm not sure that I put in the supplementals because even when you do that, it's not really accurate because, as you know, we had a very large supplemental that you just talked about tonight, this has been prepared long before that, so even when you have the, the transfers in, up to what?
Sure, you gotta snap a line somewhere.
Yeah, so the nineteen is just what was budgeted, but the years before that should be added, so our actions.
Tom?
I apologize, it's a silly question, what does HMO stand for?
Heavy Motor Equipment Operator. S H M O is Special Heavy Motor Equipment Operator.
Okay.
That's the title of the class of individual, what, what class that individual's working.
Is that a, like a registry title?
So that's an employee.
That's an employee.
Are there specialists that bring in other people that we have?
People that we have.
Anything else, gentlemen?
I just noticed that there's a pretty big difference between the requested budget for highway HMO.
That's because it was broken down, the other two above it were taken from that requested line.
So that's how, that's how it's being.
Those three equal.
Broken out this year.
Replacing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you add those up and it comes out to the request.
It still says.
Yeah.
Well, it makes sense if you ask the question.
Now it makes sense.
So, Tom, it wasn't a silly question, that's for me and Peg.
Exactly.
Don't be asking, don't be asking.
I believe in myself, I'll get a couple.
All right, the boat, the, the bottom line for highway is only ten grand more than eighteen, the nineteen budget, so that probably is a trend in this entire budget, level funding as much as possible. Okay.
It's all payroll too.
Most of it. I don't like the fact that we don't get much money for, because we can't afford it, for two minutes, paving the road, et cetera. What are our chapter ninety monies this year?
That's forty-eight thousand dollars.
And what's projected for next year?
Forty-eight thousand dollars.
But they don't expect the cost of pavement to go up at all?
Oh, no, absolutely not, no.
They just don't expect that. Just to God. Snow emergency, as we just indicated, it's always two hundred thousand, we don't want to increase that because we're a lot of deficit spend. I have no questions on snow emergency, does anybody else? No?
Seriously, we had ninety thousand dollars in salt on the supplemental request? Didn't we have a request?
I don't remember what the.
It was something like ninety thousand dollars labeled to salt.
We probably had more ice.
And that was just done for, in the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar supplemental that we just, we just got over.
I think that's on something, this was a really icy year.
Yes.
Not very snowy, but really icy.
Really icy, and yet I'm seeing total salt at forty-eight.
Well, they're gonna keep it the same, again, because.
I get that, I get that. I just was pointing out that the supplemental was at ninety of the hundred and seventy.
Do you remember a few years ago, we had to spend six hundred thousand to cover snow work?
To cover all snow, sure.
That was, uh, okay. Streetlights.
Generally, but if it was, if it melted or rained, they had to go out, so it drops down.
Because of the rain, it creates black ice. Okay, and we don't want to keep Alberdi busy. He likes his quiet town.
I don't have any questions on that section.
It's a moderating public, council, the moderating public.
If everybody walked, they'd be slipping and falling. I have one question, under miscellaneous professional tech, the budget was twenty-five thousand, it's, you requested ten, you got ten, what's the difference there? Miscellaneous professional tech services, is this to fix the lights?
Yeah, these are all your streetlights that are around town, and we get phone calls, Maple Street has two lights, so that's...
I understand that, but why was it twenty-five in two thousand eight, nineteen budgeted, and two thousand twenty only ten? How did we save the fifteen grand?
I'm not seeing ten.
I'm not seeing ten.
I'm seeing twenty-five.
I'm seeing, yeah, twenty-five.
This is, this year's budget is ten?
This year's budget is ten. Well, I'm looking at this page. Are you looking at something else?
Good. We'll look at this one, and you'll get ten.
We have our budget, we have our budget for that as, as basically we're level funding.
That's right. The bottom line of that budget was two hundred and six, two hundred and six, eight fifty.
Can I see what you?
Is this a typo in the budget?
Well, I was wondering why snow overtime's in that line too, for streetlights, the first line.
Melissa, maybe you can explain that one?
So there's typos here, it is forty-five?
And the number above that is wrong too, forty-eight thousand. Should be seventy-seven. But the bottom one is...
Can we have this page looked at and redone for the next meeting?
Do you want me to photocopy what we have?
No, this is the one that's published.
Oh.
You can vote on it tomorrow, but I don't think that...
Yeah.
There's some, there's some errors. We'd like to make sure what we're doing.
We're basically level funding across first light.
Okay, well, it does say ten thousand in my page.
Just while we're going over this quickly, is there some contract that we have with?
USNE that comes in, and they, they work on our lights.
This is, this is all for supplying, not for paying energy.
No.
This is all for fixing, repairs?
No, the first light, energy.
Energy.
Energy, the top one, is seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty. That's for your streetlights. We pay for the lights to be on, and we pay for the signals, the streetlights, traffic signals.
Do we get a contract with it?
That, EverSource? That's EverSource that does that.
Contract with who? For? For, for the cost of electricity.
That's EverSource, that's just, we don't have a contract with them.
We don't have it. There's no contract. You get paid for what you use.
It's just like...
I understand, but there's nobody out there that would say, "Hey, we'd like to bid on your lights."
This is not for repair, this is for power.
I'm saying for lights, for power.
Yeah.
Because you get, you all get calls, you all get calls at home and say, "We'd like you to join up and sign up with..."
Well, that's just your delivery, that's just your delivery. Constellation knows our delivery, because your supply and your...
EverSource does the, does the...
Supply.
Supply.
And delivery is Constellation. So it's two different entities. So no matter what, it's EverSource, and you're gonna get your electricity pump, it's just who's gonna take care of the lines to get it to?
Right, that's, so this energy for heat, light, and power is taking care of the lines?
No, it's taking care of your street, your light bulbs that come on, and your lights, your traffic signals. That's what this is for.
So again, my question is, who? Do you, can you, is there a way to save by hiring somebody to look?
I think we've done that. We've got Constellation.
Constellation is the one now.
It's the one that...
What contract type of contract do we have with? Is there six month, a year, two year, eighteen month?
There isn't a contract. It's just you...
You select somebody.
It's just cheap, it's just cheaper than EverSource.
It's like Columbia Gas comes in. Columbia Gas supplies the gas, but Constellation, again, is the one that gives us...
Delivery.
Constellation is delivering, but EverSource is supplying.
Right.
So we could theoretically find a different supplier.
Well, like, I called on Columbia Gas, because we had a question about one of our bills, it's just a for instance. And Columbia Gas to supply and deliver was gonna be double what we were paying to have Constellation deliver the supply of Columbia Gas. So right now, I mean, you could call EverSource and see if they're cheaper for delivering than Constellation, but my bet is their delivery fees are cheaper than if we add EverSource delivering.
Right. But typically, if you, like, sign up for a twelve-month contract, and you buy the contract in August or September, you're, I think you're getting lower rates than if you buy the contract in March or January or February, where the highest rates are charged. If you buy...
I was just at a Sierra Club thing about this. There are ways that we can do that, but it would be up to us, the council, to set that up. So we could enable, like, the conservation agent to look at alternate suppliers, might be able to get something that's a little cheaper, actually a little more green too. There are cities that are doing this, saving a lot of money by doing that.
Yep.
But that's something that's up to us.
That's up to us, but if you could give us what the, what the several bills have been, so we can be aware of the rates for this year from, let's say, this, this entire fiscal year.
Yeah, I can do that.
I don't have any other questions about that, Tom. Did you? I think that's a great idea. You should definitely...
Are we done? Streetlights?
Apparently we are.
Motor repair. I have no questions. Do you have any, Bill? The FTEs are the same?
Uh, just on telephones. I thought telephones were going into one line in general government or something, wasn't it, going under one year's?
That's cell phones.
Oh, so it's just...
Cell phone allowance.
Well, no, we have cellphone allowance, but down in the body of it here, there's telephone, under cellphone.
It's a hundred dollars.
Cell phones was moved up to salaries, and then...
And then there's a line item for telephone, for a hundred bucks.
Those were all eliminated and consolidated for municipal lines, were all...
Yeah, but there are that part of the municipal, they're an outside source.
So you have your own separate lines, you have your own separate...
Right, like the water department down on Hendrick Streets, they're not all involved, so they have, they have their own line.
Okay, good answer. Anything else, guys? Tom or Peg, anything on motor repair?
I do not.
No, I just like that they're repairing, what is it, seventy vehicles? Maintaining ninety?
I guess that number, we counted them once, I can't remember, but it's some, some, some still a great job.
Some staggering amount for, for two guys. In, in the newer vehicles, they're getting harder and harder to deal with, because of all the computers too.
Thousands, they say.
Yes, thousands.
Because we do it at now. Absolutely. Alright, uh, traffic? Explain again for those who don't know what professional services is.
Professional services?
You asked for eighty, is that also police details?
No. Professional services there is for painting center lines. We have to have a contract to come in and paint center lines. We also have to have a contract to come in and repair stoplights.
Okay, painting and stoplights.
And the sidewalk repair comes out of this too, and we have to hire a contractor to, to do our concrete sidewalks.
Do you have a schedule on what you'll be working on for, for concrete sidewalks?
Our schedule, our schedule for concrete sidewalks is this. Somebody calls me up and says, "I've got a bad sidewalk in front of my house." I look at it and say, "Yeah, it's bad. Who'll fix it?" Or, "It ain't that bad. I don't have the money." That's our schedule. I, I, I have to make judgment calls because, because of so many. We, we get called, we're looking at a sidewalk on a whole street, and I look at it, go, "Yeah, that sidewalk has to be replaced." I can't replace it. I don't have that kind of money to replace it, so the sidewalk doesn't get any work, doesn't get any, doesn't get any attention.
For example, North Hampton Street sidewalk?
North Hampton Street.
On the, on the west side, McKinley Ave, I was just...
Obama. Obama Town Ave. I, I can keep going on.
It is sad, but our chapter ninety money and this kind of repair, we're not getting the help from the state. I mean, the city would have to raise taxes just to do all this. Four and eighty thousand's gonna do what, a mile of a street, if you had to repave it?
That's a mile.
Half a mile.
Last year, we did Pleasant Street and Torrey Street.
And that's a mile. Okay.
Are there any, are there any state grants that are applicable to things like sidewalks?
No. We, we got the complete streets grant that we're putting in the, the crosswalks, but that's all they'll pay for, is the crosswalk. They won't pay for the approach coming up to it or going away from it. So we're putting in three of them on, on Cottage Street. Well, Cottage Street's gonna be all torn up. We might as well use the chapter ninety to do the entire street, so...
That's what you're planning?
That's, that's exactly what's gonna happen, so that doesn't leave much money left over to do anything else. We may be able to go up and do Clark Lane.
Clark Lane is horrible.
Clark Lane's horrible. It's falling apart all of this.
Where's the street that the guy came in and said was all gravel?
It's off of Summer Street.
Is that the one he's, you're talking about?
Amheroy Terrace.
Is that the one that's gravel that has to be done?
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a dirt, dirt, actually, it's like three or four hours ago. And again, judgment call. On, on the list, sorry, folks, that doesn't rank, that doesn't rank.
Because you have a major?
When I have Ma, when I have Main Street, or Holyoke Street, or Mountain Road, that's developing potholes, Amheroy doesn't, doesn't rank. Plain and simple.
It's a tough call. Alright, I'm going on. Are you guys okay? Everybody okay on traffic? Recycling and hazardous waste, this looks like a...
I noticed hazardous waste, I'm free, under request, it wasn't in the budget previous year, but is not being funded for five thousand.
You requested five thousand.
Oh, hazardous waste. Yeah, we, we used to do a hazardous waste day.
This is for hazardous waste collection.
Combined, combined with Southampton, set up a day to do it.
So if there's no budget, you can't do anything?
What we're telling people now is that there's a place in Westfield that will take their material for a cost of...
I thought there was a charge in East Hampton for hazardous waste removal. Like oil or something?
Well, we, we take the motor oil down the highway route that we burn in our waste furnace, but we also take whitelets, we take electronics, electric tubes, things like that.
And put it in the paper?
Yes. Then you're, they need a punch card. They, they take, like, a TV or electronics.
So the five thousand was to make it free for a year?
No, the five thousand was to, somebody had cleaned out their cellar, and they had paints and oil paints and, and chemicals and stuff that they wanted to get rid of, they could bring in.
And then you would dispose of it somewhere else?
We, we would have, we would have a company right there.
Okay.
Company would load it right in their trucks.
So that's where the money would go?
For the company.
Right, gotcha. Okay. And now you've been, so what you're suggesting, you're saying is that there's a place you're referring people to, to just take it there?
Just take, take it there.
And what we're looking to do is to set up, instead of paying the company as the hazardous waste company coming in to take the stuff away, is paying that company to allow so many residents to use it for the year, and will use that money that way, so that their costs for getting rid of, like, mercury or oil-based paint, that kind of stuff, that...
That would cost you a bit.
Yeah, it would be lower.
Not meant to be?
No. And we got a call from North Hampton, I guess that one point in time, they were letting these TMS residents participate in their hazardous day, collection day, and they're no longer doing that, because the setup fee for the hazardous company come in has tripled since last time. So something that used to cost like a couple thousand dollars now costs like eight to ten thousand dollars to set up a hazardous waste day, so...
Trash, same things?
Trash.
Why would, why did you ask for fifty? The budget in two thousand nineteen was sixteen-five. You asked for fifty thousand, and the mayor gave you twenty-seven. Could you explain that request?
Yeah, the schools were being picked up for nothing.
By Dusso?
By Dusso.
And now they're not, because now they're USA Recycling?
That's correct.
So we don't get for free anymore?
That's correct.
Yes, I remember. I actually know Mr. Dusso, and I thank him for that.
I'll get to know the owners of that other company, so we'll get...
They're a national company, aren't they, USA?
We put a bid out, and we don't, we, we will not be using, we are not using USA.
Should I get rid of that?
We're who we use. We covered, we covered, we, we put the bid out, we thought it was cheaper than USA.
So twenty-seven will cover that.
Correct.
Okay, good. That's interesting. Thank you, Dusso, for all your kindness over the years.
And just so you know, the school's budget for trash is almost sixteen thousand dollars. That is just a stretch.
That, that was, that was no costly.
I have grandchildren. I know what kind of trash they're making.
So this twenty-seven thousand doesn't include the sixteen thousand the schools, it does?
It does.
But there's, there's a loan, and it also includes the other stuff.
Yeah.
So the sixteen-five in twenty nineteen was really the schools, because everything else was free?
No, sixteen-five was, was everybody's, but the schools.
Schools were free. Town hall was big paid for.
Gotcha.
But the school cost, I mean, will, it will take off, but we'll charge back to the schools then. It's a charge that is very specific to the school. It's still an increase to this.
Well, it's because we never had to budget it before.
Right, no, very new.
Okay. Personnel, landfill, I mean, sorry, landfill?
No change there.
Back when, confused, Mayor, you said that the schools used to be free.
Right.
We did. We established that. Now they're being charged, that increase is reflected in the twenty-seven for schools and town buildings.
Yeah.
Correct. And the school portion's being charged back to the school budget?
It will, I believe, yeah.
It will be?
It'll be back, so charged back to the, to the school budget, but we see it now in this budget. Okay. Sorry, it was a slow process.
Is, is this new reason that it's a separate department now too, that it wasn't in previous years? The four, forty-three thirty didn't exist in years past, so kind of created like a new budget or a new department for this?
Well, it was, it existed, but it was under the mayor's, mayor's office. It wasn't under DPW.
So now it's just separated?
It's a new thing to the entity, to the DPW.
Got you.
The pickup for, by Republic is for everything, schools and town, and that totally.
And I just went over those numbers again, and come on your...
Thank you.
Just an idea, is there a way to get, like, a full citywide bid for the company, like, have all the residents and everything going to one company? Is that an option? In like...
I'm sure they probably do.
I'm sure it'd be a huge undertaking.
I'll speak for those who know more about trash.
Yeah.
That is, that is not an option. This administration even thinks that on a blue moon.
Just thinking.
You wanna touch as little trash as you possibly can.
Unless it's pickup day.
Yeah, yeah.
Especially with the way that the Chinese market is working right now.
Yeah, they're not taking any.
It's like, it used to be, there was a lot more money to be made in this business, and that's, that's really dried up over the last two years.
Yeah, I mean, there are other municipalities that have, you know, trash.
With their own landfills and everything.
And they're in trouble, because they took out, like, wherever they go.
So where are you referring to bulk purchasing?
Yeah.
Similar, similar like bulk purchase.
Bulk purchasing, not operations.
Yeah, not something that we would maintain, just...
Right, and you're...
We're still gonna be a loan. Bird, bird is huge.
Well, not only, not only that, I, I've talked to some of your, your residents, and I think a lot of them like who they've gotten. They don't wanna change their trash.
Which is, which is fine.
We already get called for potholes. We don't wanna get calls for, my trash wasn't picked up.
Yeah.
I, I tend to agree with the mayor. I think she was quite clear.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying getting into the business of it. I'm not saying getting into, just contracting with, with a company, forget it.
Alright. Landfill, can we do landfill?
Yeah.
Landfill is thirty-three. Two eighteen, forty-one, seventy-two, under supplies and services, thirty-three requested. I mean, thirty-three in two thousand nineteen, thirty-three now. Why did it go up so high? From four one seven two to thirty-three? Supplies and services under landfill, page one twenty-four.
Yeah.
I'm just curious about that.
Say that again, conference, but not problem.
Number two... Number two, Supplies and Services. Well, it sounds like it went... Well, I looked at two-seventeen, it was twenty-four. Then it went down to four thousand. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah, this is for the testing of the landfill in Oliver Street and also on the...
And you don't test every year?
They're on different, kinda different cycles. One gets tested twice a year, the other gets tested once a year. Sometimes in the spring, sometimes in the fall. The engineers have all that figured out with DPT, but it's a DPT requirement.
So, the reason it's higher is because the schedule is making it cost more this year?
Right.
We didn't have an increase in methane or something?
No.
So, you're saying for two or three visits a year, we pay thirty-three thousand dollars?
It's not so much the visits, it's the testing itself. I understand the samples without having tested.
You put boreholes, take tests?
The holes are there. They're already dug. They're there. Your pipes come up. You just put your sampler in, take your sample out and ship it to a lab somewhere.
So, I'll tell the lab that they can't charge so much because they shouldn't.
No, I think that's being funny, but I think what we're really talking about is maybe there's another lab that might be available.
We have beat this number down. Trust me, we've beat this number down.
I like to hear that. I just wanna keep beating, so if I do, the police understand. We need a whole but does it provide for a whole city here?
We have beat this number down.
Anything else on landfill there? Anybody? Cemetery, I think it's for John Mason. Correct? John, this is your job.
What are you doing?
So, John, do you have any comments on cemetery administration?
Um...
I don't see anything in the numbers that strikes me as too odd.
No, the numbers are pretty much same. We try to level budget that. The only thing we have done is we, you know, opened up the new section about eighteen months ago to create a revenue stream for Brookside. So, we are selling... And I think we've sold about eighteen of the lots so far. And then we've already had burials in there as well.
We have room?
That is the very last section. It was the old road down to the pond when they were doing the work down on the pond. Then the end for the high school, they used it to store material. After they were done with that, as an agreement to let them use that area, I had them take the road out, scrape it down, loam and seed, so it could be sold for burial lots. So, that's... and then it took a while to get the...
The grass there.
Grass there, and then I mapped it out and now we're selling lots, so...
How many more lots are available then, possibly, potentially?
There's still another... this is section A of it. I think I estimated ninety-eight lots that I can get in there.
Is a lot one individual?
Uh, two.
Two?
Two?
Seven hundred.
Can't we just cremate everybody?
We do have a cremation section as well that we built. And that's much more cost-effective for those.
I agree.
I can bring a brochure and go over all the...
I just had a burial...
I'd be glad to sit down and sell a few spots if I... You must be East Hampton resident. Other than that, money order, bank check or cash. No personal checks.
How much are they?
Cremation, three-fifty.
The lots?
The lots, yeah.
How much is a lot?
Burial lot?
So, if you wanna buy a four grave, it's twenty-eight hundred bucks for the four graves.
Why would I wanna buy four graves?
Well, because you might want friends and family to join you.
Sell them off? I had a couple of four graves here. So, they're twelve hundred each?
They're seven hundred. Seven hundred per.
Wow, it's cheap to dump. Cool.
So, yeah. So, nothing...
No, that's just for the ground that you're in. It's not everything. It's not the box.
So, other than that, there's nothing too crazy on that.
Correct.
We think we have probably a three to five-year funding cycle for section one and then we can go into section two of, you know, so we probably have ten, ten to twelve more years of sellable lots. My goal is to try to get as many sellable lots until I retire and then next job for someone else.
Cause we don't wanna be buried in another town.
No.
What you got there, sir?
Um, I noticed there's no budget for Main Street Cemetery where there was last year. Was that rolled into this one? We're running about five thousand dollars a budget?
Main Street is not our cemetery.
Okay.
That's a separate. They have their own budget, their own commission, cemetery commission. They're on their own.
Okay.
Are they part of the city?
It was there last year, that's why I asked.
They have been funded through the city in the past, but I can't speak on behalf of Main Street that's not... We have East Street and Brooks. This is Brookside and East Street. Cemeteries are the ones where my guys maintain and take care of.
Anything else on cemetery, guys? Beg, Tom? Anybody? Tree Warden, this is George, right?
George, yes.
How long is George gonna be with us? Are we... I've been talking about George. What did he say?
Don't repeat it.
George, I don't know if he plans on...
I missed it.
He says he wants to retire, but he doesn't wanna retire, so he'll be... he loves working.
He can still handle a chainsaw. He's okay.
He still handles a chainsaw. He's still probably the hardest worker in the park staff. He's amazing.
And for people that... this is for all of our parks? Any tree services that have to happen? Does that include street right-of-way trees?
So, this is for tree removals and pruning on city trees. George will make a determination with the city engineers. If there is a dicey one, they'll make a determination, yes, it's on private property. The city has no responsibility. If it's in a public right-of-way or a public hazard, George can make a determination to either remove the tree if it's dead or trim the tree or... You know, there's a lot of trees in the city that... it's amazing you see, you know, just a little number of twelve hundred dollars for his overtime. He has to go out after work to look at trees and do other things if there's an emergency, whether it's weather, you know, keys out there. I think you ran into him at like eleven o'clock, what storm. George is out there, you know, taking care of stuff, cutting trees and making right-of-ways safe. So, for twelve hundred dollars, he does all that and it's not a lot of money for what gets done for the city, that's for sure.
That looks like one heck of a bargain.
It is. It is the best bargain on the budget.
Okay. Anything else on Tree Warden? So, let's go back to streetlights. Thank you, Melissa, she's not here, for giving us this. We have a couple of extra copies. Everybody get one?
Tom, did you get one?
Go ahead, Joe. Do you want one? So, just... it looks like the snow stuff got out?
Yeah.
And she corrected the other anomaly. Miscellaneous is now twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-five. So, the math is adding up correctly now. I have no... thank you very much for making that change. It makes sense now. Any questions, guys?
Nope. I don't have any questions, no.
Well, then we're done with Public Works.
Just wanted to say that I will be abstaining from voting. Ask us not to vote on anything tonight until we've had a chance to review all the budgets from all the departments. I think it makes good sense to understand the additions and deletions that have been made to the budget before we say, oh yes, we will recommend a particular budget without any cuts. I think we should review all the budgets.
I disagree because we need to have... my feeling is the department heads are here. I would like to vote on these things. If we have further discussion, okay, when the department heads are in the room. And I don't think personally that I would want to make a cut in one budget because I'm deciding that another budget should have more money, which we can't do anything. Well, you just said that.
I just will feel better about the overall decision-making process.
Well, I'm gonna call for a vote. If you both wanna abstain, that's fine, but I wanna vote each budget while department heads are here.
Also looking at the computer services question. We're gonna give some additional information for seven-five hundred.
Yeah, what do you?
So, I'm okay with going through on some of the things. I think I understand what he's saying. You know, with the education, now moving to a different budget line and all the other fees and licenses go into another thing. You know, I think when we hit that roadblock, maybe if there's an issue or concern with that, you know, I might have a problem, you know, and request people to come back if we need to discuss any of that. But, you know, I'm fine personally voting on it tonight, but I don't wanna do this engineering one until I understand what the seven-five hundred... wasn't there a second thing too?
Well, we're voting the entire Public Works budget, so if you really wanna hold off because of that...
I don't mind holding. I can say move to review the seven-five hundred dollars.
What? I don't understand what you're saying.
I'm looking for some additional information.
We need information, you're gonna cut it before we get information.
No, I'm saying I won't vote, or I'd like us to hold our votes until after we've had a chance to review all of our departments.
Alright.
Chairman?
Yes?
I noticed on your schedule that you did not include today for DPW that building operations, which is in general. So, are you gonna ask Joe to come back for that and will that be a part of main time for DPW?
There you go. I... is that new?
It was that way last year.
Okay. I... obviously, if we need Joe to come back for general operations, we'll have him come back. And we could deal with this then. It's hard for me to vote every single section in one night. That doesn't make sense to me. I'd like to be able to have people here when we vote. I've never done that in twenty-one years, never. And I don't see the reason for it except because we can only cut. If you're really anticipating that you're gonna wanna cut something, I'll have a problem with that, but okay. That's just my statement.
I think we should wait until we have all the information, honestly. I mean, I'd be more than happy to approve fuel and some of these other ones, but the ones that I have questions pending.
No, I wanna vote just like they are in the council votes on them as sections.
As holes. I get it done on a hole.
Okay. Hold on a minute. Thank you. Enterprise.
Chair, are we gonna look at building operations as well?
I didn't have it on the...
Under general.
On the agenda, so it's hard to do that.
Okay.
I erred, I guess, in doing that. I mean, it's a public work. We could talk about it.
Not on the agenda.
I'm not prepared.
No, we did study it. I did study it. You're right. Um, okay. Joe, do you have anything on the narratives, any comments besides the fact that we need twenty million dollars in work?
No, we don't want the money.
Generally speaking...
The only thing I wanna add as far as the Enterprise building is that we are currently contracting with Kai Vons to a rate study. We got some further information today on that and I hope in the next, within the next couple of weeks we'll have some information from them as to what our rate should be doing to be able to fund that.
Fund the repairs?
Fund the repairs.
Are the rates sufficient right now to maintain operations as they exist?
They are.
So, what we're talking about is rates for capital improvement. And is a priority list on those improvements?
It's in the Integrated Water Resources Management.
And is that a five-year plan? Or could it be extended? Like some of the priority items might not have to be done right now. Some of the items aren't gonna have to be done.
The board of public works could do anything they want with that plan. They could do it all in one year. They could say they wanna do any of it, or they could do it in five years, or ten years, or whatever. But there's other projects that are gonna be stacked up behind it, so... Let them figure out how they wanna...
Alright. Well, that's not on our calendar, no. So, I'm gonna go to numbers. You guys okay with that, or do you wanna talk anything about the narratives on Enterprise? Sewer. There has been no change in the FTEs.
No.
There is a slight increase from 2019 to 2020, ten thousand dollars in the actual salary budget. I'm assuming that's anticipated increases.
Contractual.
Contractual.
Then there are also new employees there who will be entitled to step increases per contract.
That's contracted, union labor, not paid plan. Okay. I don't have anything else. I didn't see anything else here that hit me as...
Maybe I missed that. When you were talking about salaries.
Mm-hmm. Four-four-one-zero salaries. Page one-seventy. Up at the top, under total FTE, the first line says salaries, two-ninety-one to three-thirty-one.
Yeah, I just didn't view that as a minor increase. You said ten thousand, that's like forty thousand.
I apologize.
That seems like a big number, a big increase.
But it's a lot of people, right?
But the people haven't changed.
Right, it's still five and a half.
Five and a half people.
But does contract... I apologize. I misunderstood that. So, forty thousand, Joe?
Or is that maybe one of those typos?
That's a ten percent increase.
We could redo that budget.
Eight thousand dollars a year increase per person.
So, ten percent increase. Is that a typical...
In salary, eight thousand dollars a year.
What do you have in your budget? Why is it forty thousand dollars?
I mean, step increases are like three percent.
We were down two people and now two people.
And now you're fully staffed?
And now we're fully staffed.
Oh. You were down two people last year.
Sewer, just to come in, the base rate paid for sewer is thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Per person?
Per person. And this year we filled two positions. I'm not sure. I didn't come in until the beginning of July, so...
But the... so, in 2019, you were down two people?
No, we didn't have.
Then why did you say five-fifty, or five-five?
That's what it is now.
Yeah, that's what it's at now.
Nineteen actual says the same. Eighteen says the same.
And the seventeen actual says the same, so five-point-five all the way through. Great. That's great.
So, you had the budget, but you didn't have the humans, is what that means.
The positions were...
Were fit.
Right. So, thus, we were always looking for them. So, the actual salary amount, that's the difference.
That shows how many people are actually allowed to be paid, but because they didn't exist, they weren't paid. So, actually...
Now I get it.
Actually, we didn't pay them because they didn't exist.
I thought that's how many employees they had, not positions.
Full-time equivalent position rather than employee.
Gotcha.
Picking up what you're throwing down?
I'm doing it.
Thank you. Thank you for that. That's important. Okay. Anything else on the...
I had one. Last year, we budgeted five thousand dollars in equipment rental for the brush hog. That wasn't there in sixteen and seventeen. We budgeted for... it wasn't there in eighteen, we budgeted in nineteen. And then I see that it's there again.
Yeah.
I thought that was a one-time rental. I didn't know, are we budgeting five thousand for the brush hog every year or is that...
Yeah, that's not a one-time brush hog.
So, we need to... would it make sense to purchase it? I was looking them up last year when I thought five thousand was...
Sure, we could probably purchase one for seventy-nine thousand.
I'm gonna look at it, cause I swear I was searching last year with the five thousand dollars and it was probably around eight to ten thousand dollars for a brush hog, but...
No, you're... I think you're thinking of the... No, you're, I think you're thinking of the head itself, the head itself. The thing is, we have a skid steer, but I, there's no way I want to put a brush hog on our skid steer. It just beats it up. It just beats it up.
But we're spending ten thousand dollars a year, over the last two years for this rental, when it might just last us a long time to look at purchasing instead of renting.
We purchased, the last skid steer we purchased, I believe we spent eighty-five thousand dollars on the attachment. And I specifically did not get a brush hog attachment.
Yep.
I don't want to put it on it because it just vibrates the whole machine when you tear it apart.
So, in other words, he's renting one because he doesn't want to touch his other pieces of work?
Gotcha. No, I get it, I'm just...
He's, Phil's saying, why not buy one?
Why not buy one, what, the head or the...
The entire, the...
Entire brush hog.
There's options, I'm sure. I'm gonna look up, I'm gonna see if I can do some research and then...
But like I said, we bought a skid steer.
I got a brush hog guy.
We bought a skid steer that we can put a brush head on, and that skid steer costs us eighty-five thousand dollars.
And this will just damage it and lower its life expectancy and everything else.
When you rent it, what do you put it on?
The brush hog comes with the machine.
You want something that somebody sits in and rides in. It's not something that you just push, you walk behind, snowboard, you can't use one of those.
Right, the residential one, you need a commercial one, right?
And it would cost the seventy-five thousand to buy a brush hog with its own machine that it's attached to?
Well, like I said, we bought one. We paid eighty-five thousand dollars.
No, no, I'm talking about if you wanted to get another one, so it just operated, the one you rent right now, buy it instead of renting. That's another eighty-five thousand dollars.
That's at least a seventy-five thousand dollar machine.
Okay. It's always the question of rental versus... Anything else?
Back to salaries for a moment on four-four-one-oh. Um, hopefully you can clarify this, because it looks like, uh, we had still three thirty-one in the budget this time, and the actual was two ninety-one the previous year. I understand. The previous year to that was two ninety-one, and the year before that was two fifty-eight in actual.
It's two forty-five in two thousand eighteen. Where do you get to?
I'm showing an actual two fifty-eight for personnel.
In two thousand seventeen?
In two thousand seventeen.
But two thousand eighteen is two forty-five.
Two forty-five. I'm showing a budgeted amount of two ninety-one here, in last year's budget. Two ninety-one was actually budgeted.
Okay.
Yeah, because we had positions that weren't filled.
Okay. But then it said...
That's why the actual's low.
Last year, we had, we had individual leads that were at the high end of scale.
Right.
We hired new people at the low end of scale. Okay, so why isn't that savings reflected this year, since they didn't automatically go, the new people, from low to the top of the scale? Because we, because some of those positions weren't filled, but they are new this year.
But they are this year.
So, we're at five point five this year, right now?
Yes, we are. We are at full capacity.
At forty thousand dollars more than last one's at. Still trying to wrap my head around new people coming in at low rates, replacing folks who are getting paid more. At the low step, low step instead of high.
The difference between low and high is probably, what, eight dollars, I think?
Three dollars an hour?
Difference between low to high, and these didn't come in at the base. Some of them already had licenses and, you know, so you don't stick them at eighteen dollars an hour to start, you stick them in the middle because their qualifications are there. So, they're not at max, but they're in the middle, so they're probably three or four dollars less an hour than max.
And they're unionized employees.
Yeah, they are union.
Yep. So, right now, all of the positions in this department, forty-one hundred, are filled.
Yep.
And this department, when it's staffed, is five point five, yeah, that's the idea.
Okay, I understand. Anything else?
No, you can...
I'm going to the next page. Water, wastewater. Four-sixty-five to four-sixty-six in salaries. That's a lower increase, to use tax terms. It's not as big an increase as I screwed up last year. Wire supplies and services so much higher. Four-four-six-zero, six-eighty-eight actual, seven-twenty-nine this year. Four-four-six-zero, number two. Is that a total of all the stuff down below, right?
Yes, so I just...
So, there's lots of little, lots of little things, okay.
Went up about a quarter, almost a quarter of a million dollars?
No, wow.
Two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars?
No.
No, it only went up like, uh...
From FY seventeen, FY seventeen to twenty-twenty.
Oh, that's not what I was looking at. I was looking at last year.
Six-eighty-eight, and now seven-twenty, seven-hundred-and-twenty-nine. Seems like a pretty steep set of increases. What do we do?
From two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty?
From two thousand seventeen to twenty.
Well, light and power and heat, those costs went up.
You were only showing two years' thickness there.
I got everything, I got. So, sixteen was ninety-three on the light, heat and power, ninety-three thousand in sixteen, one-twenty-one in seventeen, eighteen's budget, I have is one-twenty, and then one-twenty-five for nineteen's budget, and then we went up to one-fifty-seven this year, so. It keeps jumping up pretty high. Twenty-seven thousand for the last year.
Energy costs.
That's our heating, fuel, and electricity.
We have three to five, eighteen pump stations. From East Hampton, it's too flat.
The miscellaneous...
I thought you would need pump stations if it was hilly.
Only if you're pumping uphill.
You can use gravity in your budget, too.
Sewer lines. Alright, never mind.
The miscellaneous professional services there, that line, um, was two-twenty-eight, two-twenty-nine, and then we jumped up to two-ninety. Do you know why that jumped up about sixty thousand?
That's fifty-three-nineteen?
Uh, yep.
Sledge disposal.
Sledge disposal, miscellaneous professional services.
We have to truck that to an incinerator in Connecticut, or we have to have it trucked to the incinerator.
Prior to that, we didn't?
Oh, no, we've been trucking it there forever, but the cost just keeps going up.
More sludge?
Higher cost, and not so much more sludge, just cost more, take it out there.
Paint hardware lumber, uh, where... There was no prior budget, that's a new two thousand dollar budget, um, prior to twenty nineteen.
He's doing the railings and stuff like that.
He's got eighteen pump stations, gotta keep painted. I think two thousand dollars, pretty cheap.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it just didn't exist before, so did it come from some other line elsewhere?
Was there a paint hardware, labor, lumber?
There was a budget in nineteen, last year, two thousand dollars, nothing in sixteen, seventeen.
What's happened in, what's happened in the past is a lot of things were painted. They were miscoded, and we start looking at that, say, that doesn't really belong here, it belongs here.
Right, and changing it, it was somewhere else. Tires, tubes, and change, so are we looking?
You don't want to pay?
Are we looking at replacing tires? I mean, we went, we went...
Worst year, when we...
Lions and tigers and bears. Going from a thousand dollars to forty-five thousand dollars, that's, that's one of the lines that is driving it, so tires, tubes, and change.
No, that's not a thousand.
No, no.
I got forty-five thousand.
Forty-five thousand and lab supply.
I got three thousand for lab supplies.
Repair and maintenance.
Repair and maintenance is three thousand dollars.
We'll need another copy.
I think we gotta, I got another copy of this one, 'cause it's not accurate.
What's the bottom line, seven-twenty-nine-three?
Yeah, I got the same bottom line, but...
Things must be all...
Out of placement.
Those dues and memberships shouldn't have anything there, that should be zeroed out. Yeah, that should be zeroed out.
Yeah, I think everything's...
Oh, boy. So, page one-seventy-three. Okay.
Yeah, no wonder you were questioning that.
That seems like a big...
Tire, tubes, and chains, forty-five thousand?
So, that should be a thousand?
Yes.
Should be.
Yep.
And so...
Lab supply should be forty-five.
Right.
So, then last year, tires, tubes, and chains was then thirty thousand dollars, right?
No.
And it went to forty-five? Oh, no, I mean, lab supplies. So, that went up fifteen thousand dollars. Okay, I guess what we're talking about, what's driving that one?
I'm not particularly sure, other than the fact that, um, there's certain things we have to do every day, and I don't know, I...
Okay, yeah, so I guess fifteen thousand dollars is a big increase that...
Fifty percent increase in the line item. So, I guess I would have... There's specific things that he has to buy, and if the cost goes up on them, then we still be buying.
So, you get, you get this budget request from your wastewater farmer?
They, they send it to me, yes, and we sit down and redo it.
Okay.
He probably told me what that was, I just can't remember.
Alright.
What's NPDES? It's not on there, I'm looking at the narrative. That's where the lab tests, gets a certification.
That is...
The narrative.
Oh, the narrative.
It's where they do the lab, it has to do with the lab.
It's, it's, it's an acronym, and that stands for national something discharge permit, um, that's what...
You get the permit after you do the lab?
No, no, we get the permit, and then we have to, we have to make sure that our lab results match what the permit says we have.
Gotcha.
Says the result should be. If they don't, we're in trouble, and that, that, that needs a permit is what drives the...
The lab supplies.
Okay.
Do you pay dues or memberships on the line item, the last line item?
It's supposed to be lined.
That's supposed to be zeroed out?
That was supposed to be, that was supposed to be zeroed out.
Is that something that went to personnel?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
So, the question you would be answering, probably other than personnel, would be what do we pay for that twenty-five thousand dollars? Is it dues, or is it memberships and... Well, it's a different organization that they belong to, so they can go to seminars and things like that. They have to have continuing education for, um, yeah, wastewater licenses.
Okay.
And you see it pays for that, yes?
Makes sense.
That's part of the fact that they have to keep their license up to date.
Going on to water, you have more on this bill, or safety, non, or pay? Okay, water departments. We have a full complement of six point five people in the six point five FTEs.
We have, this is, it's six point five people, we do not have six point five people in there yet. We have filled a couple of positions, and I think we still have one, two positions.
Two positions to fill.
So, a four point five.
Yeah, but they have six...
The budget is for six people.
Right.
Our attention is to full loads.
So, the salary line includes filling those budgets by July one, filling those positions. Okay. Supplies and services, slight decrease from two thousand nineteen actual.
Yeah, I think that was due to the fact that education and training, you know...
It was four thousand, yeah, I see that's been the one that is. The one-fifty thousand for light, heat, and power, that's up, I assume. You guys had last year's budget, seventeen or eighteen? What was it?
Uh, it was one-on-nine, one-forty, then the budget of one-fifty.
So, energy is obviously going up a lot, and this is to run the pump stations, to pump the water up the hill.
Correct, so we can run down.
When it's in the sewer line.
Pump the water up the hill to put in the tank, so there's...
For sludge.
To run out of the chain and drink the water.
Clean out the sludge.
No, we're talking about the water tanks.
Oh, that is, two different places.
Yeah, you add a lot of humor.
A lot of good thoughts.
I just don't see them.
We still have gits, tramps, and thieves, it's only two hundred dollars. Tire, tube, and chain, that would be two hundred dollars. It's because the water department doesn't have any trucks, or what?
No, they have trucks, they have equipment, but it's the nice thing with the water department, the equipment they have is fairly new, so we're not looking at replacing.
So, you didn't add more money because you don't think you're gonna...
Try to get away with two hundred dollars, just in case we pick the nail or something.
Okay. Anything, Bill, or fifteen?
Pipe and fittings, pretty much doubled. It was fifteen thousand in sixteen, seventeen thousand in eight, uh, seventeen, and then now we're looking for thirty thousand. I'm just wondering what would drive that to double? I don't know what the actual is in eighteen.
The actual in nineteen was thirty.
The actual, the budget.
I'm looking at thirty thousand dollars in nineteen.
Right, so sixteen was fifteen, seventeen was seventeen, and nineteen's budget was thirty, so I'm just wondering why it went from fifteen, seventeen, to thirty?
What is this, pipe fitting?
Uh, pipe, pipes and fittings, yeah.
So, anytime we get a water break, anytime we get service leak, things like that.
Is that happening with greater frequency because of the age of things?
It certainly is.
Probably goes to the twenty million we need.
It takes to the twenty million dollars. We have a pipe on, case in play, on mechanic street that we joke it's stainless steel pipe by now because we put so many wraparound stainless steel plants on it.
I hate to ask this, do we have any lead that we're dealing with?
No.
In this retrofit that's twenty million dollars?
No, no, lead is not an issue.
So, we don't have a Flint, Michigan issue?
We absolutely do not have a...
Thank you. I wanted that on the air, because people have been asking me, when they hear this, no, it's not about lead pipes.
Why is lead not an issue for us that are for other commanders?
Maybe we were smarter, I don't know.
Because, because we, we got rid of all our lead, uh, boost neck connection pipes over the year. We've done testing in the schools as required, and there is no, there is no lead issue in schools.
You mean in the piping?
In the piping.
Okay. And you would think there would be, because they're very old.
That's right, but no, there isn't.
So, there may be lead pipes, but they're not?
They're not being used.
They're not, they're not getting any toxic...
They may have been shut down.
No, it's got water pipes in the schools.
If there's, if there's lead pipes in the schools, I think what they did was they, they, they shut those down.
And...
We don't have any lead pipes in the streets, leading from the street to the...
Oh, I get it, right. Alright, well, that's a good, good answer. Tom?
Um, is it, what's the deal with the uniforms that we got there? This seems just kind of expensive for, for...
Your, your contract says that each individual gets twenty hundred dollars a year for uniform allowance?
That's a, that's collective bargaining deal. Most of our unions have that same thing in their...
Are they, are they special uniforms?
No, wait a minute, let me back this. That's, that's, three hundred dollars is a clothing allowance, so they can buy boots with it, they can buy socks with it, they can buy underwear with it, they want. But they also get, I believe it's seventy-five dollars where they have to buy logo clothing, so that they're identified as a someone from part twelve.
And their safety stuff, their high vis...
Their safety stuff, because they're dealing on...
Jackets and stuff that you see on the street, that bright neon, that, that's also part of their uniform.
The only thing we supply as far as safety is the safety vest and gloves in, in... The only thing we supply as far as safety is the safety vest and gloves and, and they're running a chainsaw, face shield, the, the safety stuff. But, um, if they don't like the, uh, if they don't like the vest and they want to buy their own T-shirt, then they can buy their own T-shirt that's the same color.
Okay, so that, those boots, all right, I think something's...
All right. Anything else, Tim?
It's actually lower than the previous actuals that, that are there. It was like thirty-one hundred and stuff like that. I did have one more on the concrete. Um, looking at actuals, we did forty thousand, thirty thousand, and then we're, we're budgeting for fifty-five thousand, so I'm just wondering where, where that went up fifteen.
The tuba scot-free is the blacktop, that's, that's what the highway department has to use, make the final repair once...
Once they dig the hole and dig the...
They have to dig up the road to fix the water pipe. The budget to put the pavement is in this account.
In this account.
Because the water department, they do the work, but the water department's paying for the material.
That's correct.
Okay, makes sense.
Just... The SCADA communications. SCADA, SCADA system.
Yeah.
That, that is what, um, what controls our water pumps. We have a control panel down at Tenner Street. And, uh, an individual can sit here and start, stop pumps.
Yep.
And monitor, see what we have for...
Is it a service that we paid someone for the, for...
It's a...
A program?
It's got your program.
So we bought the program or we're renting the program?
Uh, here, we're, we're renting the program, but there's, there's always upgrades to it, things like that. And there's always maintenance, maintenance to the, um, units that have to talk to each other, the, the sending unit at the treatment plant versus the receiving unit at the pump station.
Anything else? Can I turn the page? Enterprise Education and Training. So this isn't going to personnel?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
It says GF Budget two thousand twenty, eighteen thousand two hundred.
I, I was on instruction and all training is going to personnel.
We have a budget of eighteen...
If it's enterprise, it, it has, the money has to show through enterprise.
Oh, right, because it's an enterprise account, it's not general fund account, and then it goes to personnel if they, personnel uses this budget.
For expenditure.
She decides who gets the money, but it comes out of this account.
Same process.
Right, okay, got it. Whereas if it's general fund, all the money goes to her account. Whereas in this case, because it's enterprise, it has to be accounted for under enterprise. Got it, got it, got it, got it.
Okay, so now the question I have is why there was nothing in nineteen for these items?
They were all in each department, and I went back and I added them all up. They do work.
They do work.
Except dues and membership with the wastewater treatment, but that one was in error because it was off the wrong line, which she was correcting because of page. Everything adds up.
Do you need us here, Bill?
Can I say something? I need Bill here.
I know, I feel like...
Maybe Peg, you and I could leave.
I think we could go.
Bill, he's got his calculator and he's adding. He's actually got last year's budget.
Cross-referencing, Scott.
Sorry.
You're doing your due diligence.
Nerd-y out.
I'm gonna...
Did you say nerdy out?
She did. So the education and training.
I don't think it's nerdy at all.
Thank you.
Tomato, tomato. It's tomato, tomato.
You just want company.
Exactly.
So enterprise reserve, that's a small amount, and you put, Mary, you just put a small amount in there in case something is needed. I have a big question, and Melissa's not here. Where is retained earnings show up? I forget where that showed up. That's our stabilization fund for enterprise.
Oh, um...
Would it be under, I'm just curious what it is, though.
Debt, foundation, the back.
Four seven million now. And you use that for capital improvement, right? We can't use any of that for this repair?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So we're gonna supplement. So it's in another location, I forgot. I just want to make sure, we'll get to it, it's okay. You guys want to wait on approving on affairs?
Yeah, because about fifteen thousand are in the page, screw up.
All right, since John Mason's still here and the library is still here, we'll have to talk about you guys. Are we done with Joe? Well, there was one page we're missing. If she's gone to do it, can you hang out just a second? And I'll look at it in case there's any questions. I think she's in there trying to fix it. Is she? Okay, so culture and rec. We've already had a nice speech from... One forty-one is the narratives for the library. We love the library. Personally, I don't mind that you ask for the moon, as long as you understand why you don't get the moon. Seriously.
But you keep asking.
Mount requested, three seventy-eight. I love it.
We may lose our mind in approving.
Well, no, because that's up to the mayor to have to put the money in. It'd be awesome, it'd be great if we could add money in.
I know.
Council salaries, fifty thousand dollars. Uh, that states the law, unfortunately. Uh, under the library, do you want to say anything about the library? Except we know, we know what you... She actually came, gave us a nice speech and told us what's going on. I think you were here, were you here for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Got us ready.
I forget your first name.
Nora.
Nora.
Really, your request is, is representative of the gap?
It is, yeah, I...
You just wanted, for illustrative purposes, to get it on paper?
Uh, for the last, this, in the last two years, I've been asking for our actual full operating budget as opposed to what the state mandated.
And you fund that through grants and other, other revenue.
Endowment, yeah.
Last year's request was three seventeen.
Yeah.
Huh?
Good for them.
Absolutely.
I have a stupid question. Where's the, uh, so salaries is done under purchase of services?
Yeah, I guess so. I give, I give a detailed budget, but I think Melissa then consolidates it into that same one.
So if we, and, and, uh, if we sat down, Nora, uh, and I sat down, I wanted all of the FTEs, we have that. When, because library employees aren't city employees, it started to mess up our FTE count and match our balance with our actual pay, our actual payroll. We did it, we could, we could figure out how to do it and true it out without getting...
So when we give you two hundred and thirteen thousand, it's used for lots of things.
Sure.
Salaries, supplies, new books.
Exactly.
I'm just curious, what's the level of technology in our computers? Are we up to date or are we... Uh, not at all, right. I mean, you could be behind times if you bought a computer yesterday.
Yeah, that, that's, that's very true, but no, our, the computers we offer to the public are probably five or six people. Those are something we need to look at.
Okay.
Hopefully find a brand or something.
Borrow some of Joe Pip's money.
A lot of people use, uh...
I'm leaving.
It's not a good pick.
Yes, I'm leaving.
You realize, Peg, this is a tall video.
I do.
Thanks for joining us.
You should move a lot quicker now that I'm leaving.
No, you were fine. We're losing all our humor, though. So out of that, two thirteen. I don't know anybody in Bryn Mawr here. Um, how much of that is maintenance costs?
Maintenance to building?
The building, the equipment, the computers?
Oh, none of that. Our, our, well, to the computers, uh, maybe a thousand or so. Um, our agreement with the city prohibits us from using city money to maintain the building on the grounds.
Oh.
So we don't use any of that.
So when you request three seventy-eight?
Yes.
That extra money that, beyond the city budget, that's what's used to do repairs?
The three seventy-eight doesn't even include, uh, building fix rooms again, that's not part of our agreement with the city. Three seventy-eight is just to operate the libraries, pay the salaries, the lights on.
I thought you were illustrating what it actually costs to run the library.
No, there's another forty or so thousand outside of that three seventy-eight that isn't part of our agreement that we also cover insurance, so...
Things like that?
Yeah, maintain.
So the two thirteen is strictly operational? Does it also, but it does include supplies and books and things?
Well, I think we spread it around, it certainly doesn't cover everything.
No, no, but I mean, it's not just salaries.
Right.
Okay. All right. Are, are we stable, surviving? I know you come every year and you scare the hell out of me.
And I'll keep doing it. No, um, we're, yeah, we're gonna have to, I think we're gonna have to pull back this year because we're, we're starting to draw. This was a good year for our investments, but it won't always be that way, so we have to alter, um...
You mean your endowment investment?
Yeah, our, our...
If we keep giving tariffs like China, things might just keep going.
So...
I don't want to start there.
Yeah, we may have to cut.
Sometimes I gotta be real. All right. I don't have any questions except, you're doing a great job, Nora.
Thank you.
And I hate to make you stay all night just to say you're doing a good job, but...
That's all right.
Okay. All right. Do we, our cultural recreation is one budget, so we don't do it. You guys have any questions on the library? Tom, anybody?
I appreciate getting the information earlier on, too.
Yeah, thanks for...
Yeah, actually, that helped tonight. It meant, meant that we know. Good, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, let's go home, let's forget about John Mason.
Poor John. That's what you get for being last.
Parks and Rec.
I guess you do this agenda, I gotta switch.
Uh, John, do you want to say anything about your accomplishments, your goals and objectives, your trends that are listed in the narrative in the budget?
Yeah, so our accomplishments, it's, um, for what we have for a budget and staff, um, it's pretty amazing what the guys are able to do over there, George and the staff. You know, you look at the parks budget, um, you know, in the total thirty-four thousand, and you take the man and rail, and I add another two for, uh, the boardwalk, which was never funded for maintenance costs, even though it's a one point two million dollar project. You know, we're, we, we run about thirty-six percent of our budget is just putting the lights on in the park and in the office and heating. So you, you, you take that out and then you figure out exactly what we're doing with trucks that are twenty-plus years old and, uh, lawn mowers that are twenty-plus years old. And the amount of, um, facilities that, that are being built and what we're trying to take care of, uh, just says a lot about the staff that I have over there. I think, uh, what they've done speaks for themselves.
Okay, I'm onto the actual budget.
And then I, well, on another note, um, you know, this year we got to add in exactly what we spend, um, with our revolving account towards salaries. You know, on the recreation budget, you'll see it's like a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that is not city dollars that...
Where is that?
It's in the recreation, under other sources.
Other sources?
Oh, okay.
So that's...
One hundred and eighteen thousand.
Yeah, so that's, that's revenue, um, you know, like through camp on a truck and stuff.
Camp revolving, camp revolving, revolving, okay.
Yeah, so, and then, um, you know, the winter programs and all the programs that, that require staffing. So those positions get paid through the revolving account, so it does not show up on the city budget for, for dollars spent on it, but there is staffing associated that we, we underwrite the cost for.
And those are not included in the salary?
Nope, nope, those are just on, yep.
In the FTEs, so six point five. Well, they wouldn't be because they're eighteen...
They're, they're, yeah, so there are FTEs.
Eighteen camp, yeah.
Because it's, you know, it's based on forty hours a week, fifty-two weeks out of the year, so like the camp is three point four or five FTEs. So we do show it as city employees because they are paid through the payroll system, even though they're paid through the park or rec account. Something, something else that was put in for this year, um, and I don't see it, I guess on your copy, is, is what we spend in expense, on the expense line that doesn't show up is, um, last year was seventeen thousand, about seventeen five on our revolving account that pays for equipment repairs, tires, things like that that doesn't show up on the city budget, that we, that wouldn't recharge for co-ed softball league fees, things like that. We reinvest all that money back into, um...
Buying tires?
But whatever, whatever it takes, whether it's, you know, for the equipment that, that's needed to work on ball fields, um...
So how is that accounted for, though? You get money in from the co-ed, you don't account what that money is?
Yeah, 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 it goes to park leagues, and then we, we reinvest it out.
It goes to what?
It goes in our park leagues revolving account and reinvest it back out, expense line in the park leagues.
Because it's not taxpayer money.
It's not taxpayer money, so, but, but we are using it to offset taxpayer dollars.
But if somebody wanted to make sure you were using it properly, they could find those numbers.
Yeah, we gotta go through the triggers. Yeah, all the deposits and all the, so I pull a purchase order just like anything else?
Okay, I just wanted to know.
Yeah, it's all through the city.
So it's just not showing up in here because it's not city taxpayer money?
It's not taxpayer money.
So there is an account and it's completely...
Not, not something to appropriate.
I got you, yep, okay.
Things like league fees.
Yeah, so league fees, so those types of things that we charge for, you know, for tournament months that come in and, you know, we charge them five hundred dollars to use our ball fields. We take that money, we actually use that back into the parks to, to pay for expenses.
Yeah, fix a lawnmower.
What, yeah, you know, the drag, everything, there's the tractor, um... It's a lot.
Is it the same for the weekend admission fees?
No, that goes into general, the league, the, the park passes goes into, um, general fund.
The income and general fund, it was like seventy thousand, I think I saw as the...
Is that also for pool fees and things like that, too?
Yeah.
In terms of park fees, where are we and where have we been? How have they changed?
There's an eight-year run, whatever you need to know.
Yeah, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Boy, what did you read his mind or did he call you already?
I do this every year regardless of this meeting, but just in case you need it for this. So that'll outline what we take in for vehicle passes, picnic sites, pavilions, gazebos, ban shelf, the community pool, cemeteries, everything that's taken in for, for dollars.
Two thousand and eighteen, it turned over a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars.
Sure do, boy, sir. You're so fine. That is, in terms of the actual fees, let's say for these various items, do you have the sheet that details the fees and the schedule, the fee schedules over the time period?
Yeah, so we, we publish that in our, uh, non-a-tuck brochure every year. So it's available online or, you know, we, actually, they have it in City Clerk's office, we, and actually, I think you got one in your mailbox.
That's give us, give us the current.
Yeah, I gave you one like about six weeks ago.
They give us the current.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm thinking of like historical, like how long has the park passed been, what have they just...
It's been, it's been three dollars, so it's been three dollars, so this is, goes back some type in here, so it goes, this will be my tenth summer. Um, it's been three dollars every year, um, going back from entering the park. This year, we're doing a shoulder season cost, so, um, shoulder season is called. It's, it's a way to charge more during your, during your peak time, so we're charging four dollars on the weekends for a vehicle, um, June, July and August. So we're going up a dollar this year on that. Pavilions, picnic sites, things like that have gone up a little bit here and there, nothing, nothing too crazy on those pool costs. Um, we went up on non-residents last year, four and six dollars, residents are three and five. So we, we did, that's why you might, that's why that spike in there of twenty-one from seventeen, because it wasn't a good weather year, but, um, the average daily, um, fee was increased for what we were hoping in the pool.
Everything's been filled on the picnic sites pretty much, or you didn't find people turning away?
No, no, we, the only time we turn away is Fourth of July and, and you don't want to go into the park on Fourth of July because they're, they're picnicking everywhere, it'll just drive you insane. So it's one of those times you just kind of have to, you know, deal with the, the amount of traffic in the park for the weekend and, and then it gets back to the normal craziness after that. So there's some background of, you know, not only what...
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
That's also very helpful.
Okay, so that was recreation.
So you... See, uh, recreation.
And now we're talking park. Are you guys okay with recreation?
No, because, uh, offices and posted supplies is going in.
Yeah, it's going in, so yep.
It's the same one.
It's going up here, yep. And then as far as, um, the park, um, budget on the expense line, you'll see on our facilities, we went up $2,000 and that is earmore, earmarked towards the boardwalk.
Because you didn't have any maintenance?
We had zero maintenance costs associated with the boardwalk through the years and I said we would, you know, look at it, figure it out and, and see how much it's, it's costing us. This year, it's costing us a lot before we get through this budget. Those planters alone to drill were $1,000 to.
Planters?
No, total. And that was done today because.
To do what? What are we doing?
We had to drill the base of those planters because they were not installed correctly. So the water was holding in the planters and choking trees. So we, we've had to take everything out.
All of the planters there, planters being that entire area where it's.
They're all, every planter in there is empty.
All the, the big planters, there's like six of them that go up.
The big bowl planters, the big fish bowls.
Yeah, fish bowls. That's what they ended up being.
Um.
Remember that woman's walking in white jacket and a dog?
So those used to have trees in them. They didn't survive under the conditions they were put in. So, so just, you know, give an example, what the boardwalk's costing us, even though it wasn't, it's not a line item, that was $950 alone today to pay for that. That's not going to include the stone, the material in, in the, what we're going to replant with, which we're going to go with, it looks like perennials. And we want to make sure everything's done for cultural payoff, so we're, we're trying to hammer on this. We have to put new drainage in there. Or actually install the drainage that was never installed originally. So there's, there's going to be more cost there. The, the buoy system that we put in, that was, that was three grand that we paid for the buoys to be put out there to protect the people that, that have come through. So you can't go over the dam if you're in a kayak or Albo or whatever. So we, we installed those and paid for those. So there's been a lot of expenses that, that have been associated with the boardwalk and, and we are putting it into the budget now moving forward because we've had a lot of those costs.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, and then the man hand rail trail last year was the first year that was put into a city budget. They were separate entities. So that's under our, that $2,500 has been moved into our expense line.
Has that been used up yet?
Oh, oh, yeah.
What did you do for $2,500?
Yeah, they, yeah, they do, it's amazing. They stretch it out pretty good for what they get done for $2,500, absolutely.
Okay, anything else?
I will say that Man and Rail Truck may raise a lot of money, does a lot of that supplement.
Right, to supplement.
Right, this, honestly, this, I think is.
Anything else, guys? Culture Recreation? Nothing? Do we want to vote this? Because we don't have any questions? We want to vote them all, I think.
We'd rather vote. For Mike.
One, nine. Is that what you?
Yeah, that's fine.
I'd rather vote on them if you don't have any questions. Alright, thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
We'll go back for Joe.
Thank you for the time.
We're gonna go back.
Sorry, we, we had to wait till the.
That's right, I'll go back to my office anyway, so you're, you're there.
Can we go back?
Good, good timing with the work on the boardwalk.
Exactly.
Uh, page 172, guys. We're gonna look at that while Joe's still here. And corrected. Thank you, Melissa, for doing these corrections. And I just want to say with a budget this massive, I am not surprised that there might be a couple of typos. It's very difficult.
So you sent your enter manually?
Yeah, this is, this is in Excel spreadsheet. And so that one, in that case, I'm not sure what happened with the other one, because that was just off, off the map, but they were all shifted a row.
Yeah.
There was actually a full row missing, so I had to. I hope I caught it all.
So back to it.
Oh, I see. What was that? The 30,000?
Yeah.
Pump station repair maintenance for 30,000. That was the one missing.
So this is a lot more clear, guys?
I think the lines light up.
Yeah.
It's really just, everything was exactly one row down or up.
Right. So the only, only still pending question, because I was able to look at it, was the lab supplies for $15,000 more?
50% increase in lab supplies, which we're going to add additional to.
Right.
Everything else.
And you take note of these questions we had? I forget your colleague's name.
Michelle.
Michelle, you remember these questions that we all asked tonight? We need a little more information on? If you want to supply that information by email to us, that'd be fine.
Okay.
Yep.
And if there's further questions, we can ask Joe to come back. And yourself, maybe when we have to deal with building operations. But it seems like a fairly relatively normal budget. I mean, building operations is something you didn't do previously, right? I've taken all of this.
And if we seem hard with our questions, it's because we want to be able to provide the money for that $20 million increase. And the other increases that are, this, this city faces. It is definitely not perfect. It is definitely, it's a way, a way, a way to, a way to look to, to do everything we can.
And the other reasons we ask questions is because if somebody asks us, I want to have at least a little knowledge. Oh, call Joe. That's, that's a cop out. I should know something, but here. But still, I can't answer what the labs are like. I think we're done. Are we done, guys? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.